Well, good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order for December 3rd, 2018, the work session for the York County School Board. And I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving holiday and enjoyed some time with their families. We're missing the two board members tonight. Ms. Haywood's out with one of her grandchildren who's sick. And Dr. George just recently came down with the crud that's going around. So just a reminder, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. So we try to stay healthy. So we have a full agenda this evening, so we're going to get started with our presentations. And Dr. Shandor, if you'd share comments on the first strategic plan update?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members and staff. This evening, we have a number of presentations, and we'll jump in. We have our first presentation. It's a strategic plan status update on Goal Two, Objective 2.6, 2-6 Internships and Mentorships. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cagle, Associate Director of Education Technology and Innovation. Dr. Cagle?
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide the strategic plan status update on the objective addressing opportunities for our YCSD students to participate in internships, mentorships, and job shadowing. Goal Two states that the York County School Division will engage all students in rigorous educational experiences. One of the objectives for this goal is for our students to complete an internship, mentorship, or job shadowing experience prior to graduation. As this is a new objective, I would like to share with you the actions that have been taken so far as well as next steps. The purpose for these experiences is to help our students develop essential skills necessary in the workplace, as well as help them discover careers of interest. Another important benefit is that students are not only getting exposure to a career that interests them, they may also determine this is not a job they want to pursue. Last year, a committee convened to begin developing a common understanding of work-based learning. The committee included teachers, a high school counselor, building administrator, business representative, and central office staff. The process continued this year and resulted in the identification of courses and experiences we already have in our program of studies, as well as defining additional experiences to consider. One of these, work-based learning, will be proposed in next year's program of studies. Last school year, 25% of our graduating students completed at least one of the courses requiring work-related experiences shown on the previous slide. In order to meet our objective of 100% by FY '22, we have started taking some actions which will provide more opportunities for our students. Out of the students engaging in work-related experiences identified in our current program of studies, almost half of these completed the Career Mentorship class. Marketing classes include fashion and sports marketing. Other courses included two specialized courses for our students with disabilities and our cooperative education program open to all students. As the Career Mentorship class has the highest number of participants, let's take a closer look. Here, you see just a few examples of students involved in the Career Mentorship class. It is a non-paid, work-based experience available for students in grades 11 and 12. In this course, students spend at least 140 hours with a mentor on a work site where they are expected to demonstrate a positive work ethic and follow company procedures. They develop communication, teamwork, self-representation skills, and more. The top three career clusters selected by students in the course last year were held Science, Education and Training, and Business Management and Administration. In the October work session, Dr. Shandor shared how a business advisory council was developed to partner with YCSD to prepare our students to be career-ready. This group just held its fourth meeting, where they showcased a draft of the first career readiness video. This is just one of a series of videos that will be shown to our 10th grade students throughout the school year. Three of the members of this council also participated in a Q&amp;A panel for our secondary teachers attending the training on teaching workplace readiness. Our next step is to reach out to local businesses to find work-related experiences for our high school students. We are in the process of creating a database where businesses and parents can submit their interest and availability in providing support with career awareness, as well as internship and mentorship opportunities. We have also met with two of our high school student advisory groups to hear from our students. Our goal is to meet with all of our high schools and include their input in the work on this objective. In addition, as Dr. Vladeau will share, the FY '20 program of studies proposal includes information on how students can earn credit for work-based learning experiences. In order to provide support to our students and schools, career coaches will be needed to manage the experiences. In addition, we'll need to develop a mechanism to monitor students meeting this objective. Counselors, administrators, and central office will work together to communicate information and expectations to students and parents. This objective is very closely related with our objective addressing career awareness. A presentation on that objective is scheduled in March, and I look forward to providing you additional updates on some of the information I shared tonight, including the business partner database. Thank you for your time, and I hope for questions.
I just thought of something, because I know it's been about three, four years ago. Junior Coxton called me down there and said, "Mark, we need to talk." You know, Coxton of Body Repair. He was so struggling to find folks in that field. And every time New Horizons graduated somebody, somebody else would get that person. So he was hurting to find the people to mentor, even in his own business, and to put them in a field that he was willing to pay them a really good paycheck. So this just kind of builds that excitement of, this is very nice to hear. I mean, it's exciting, it's going to be good for our students and our county for that fact, and so...
We were just there Friday. We had a business advisory meeting that took place in New Horizons, so we could take our business group on a tour of New Horizons. And ironically, Junior Coxton is on our business advisory committee. But he also, when we went to the auto body shop or lab area, Autotech, thank you, he actually hired a young lady from that group last year and signed her at last year's signing day. So, good example.
Yes. And I'll just say that at the Career and Technical Education Advisory Meeting I was at this past week, we had this same discussion about, you know, how are we going to do this? What are the ramifications? What are the, you know, how's it all going to work out? And I know you all are actively working on that, so keep up the good work, and hopefully we'll hear some good things soon. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Cagle, for that presentation and that information. Next, we have another strategic plan status update on our agenda, and I'll let Dr. Shandor share more details on that one.
Thank you. Our next presentation is going to be on, I'm sorry, Strategic Goal Three, Objective 3-2, Retention and Recruitment. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Human Resource Officer, Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, members of the board. This will be a somewhat familiar report than we've done from previous years, but we've made significant changes to this strategic plan in an effort to better describe our current reality, so we can be more effective in reaching our goals to recruit, hire, retain, and support a diverse staff that meets our highest standards. To give our situation some context, the concern that the entire nation is grappling with will be an increasing concern for us is the impact of the national state teacher shortage. Last year, I shared with you a graph from the United States Department of Education highlighting that enrollment and teacher preparation programs had fallen off by a third during the years 2008 and '09, and it was continuing. I also highlighted that Virginia was not immune to this shortage. This year, I bring you an updated graph from the well-respected educational researcher, Linda Darling-Hammon's 2016 study on teacher supply and demand in the U.S. Here, we see an estimated gap of 100,000 teachers per year stretching out at least until 2021. And the resulting cumulative effect of a decreased number of candidates is exacerbated by ongoing retirements and employees leaving the field, as it becomes increasingly more complex and accountable, which makes our efforts at recruitment and retention much more important. However, we do have a measure of protection from the teacher shortage, as our division, in our division, principals historically hire experienced teachers three to one over teachers new to the field. And over two-thirds of those experienced teachers come from divisions that border ours. So obviously, our most effective recruiting tool is continuing to be the highly effective school division that we are, because that reputation primarily is spread by word of mouth. But we will also be shifting resources from attending job fairs into social media and digital platforms to help recruit the best experienced teachers in the region and make the most of our recruiting dollars. When we do hire teachers new to the profession, they come from a variety of colleges and universities, but about a half come from one of the three universities, all close by Old Dominion, William &amp; Mary, and Christopher Newport. Other schools where we have found multiple teachers are Liberty, Longwood, Regent, UVA, and VCU. The only out-of-state school that's been productive in recent years is Slippery Rock in Pennsylvania, and we'll continue to visit those campuses. In regards to diversity, we've also had a constant presence at HBCU, that's Historically Black Colleges and University, job fairs and interview days. But we haven't landed a prospect from one of those in some time. Last year, we visited four HBCUs at Hampton University, Norfolk State, Virginia State, as well as North Carolina A&amp;T, and a diversity virtual job fair sponsored by Diversity in That magazine. This year, we're still considering that virtual fair, as we have recruited one employee from there in the past. However, our longstanding relationship with that magazine, we're going to cease that, as it's been very expensive over the last five years, and we've never landed a single candidate from that format. We turn now to the diversity in our division's workforce. Here, too, we're making some changes on how we report out our numbers, in an effort to be more transparent and accurate about the current state of our workforce diversity. We, along with all school divisions nationally, have to file every other year the EEO 5 report that's required by federal law as part of Civil Rights Act of 1964. There's a number of EEO reports. Higher Ed does the EEO 4, and some private sectors are EEO 1, 2, and 3. So we've been doing this for years, and it's always on the even-numbered year. So I just filed this report last week. When I arrived here four years ago, I continued the reporting formula that was already in place as far as this report. With the new strategic plan, there's an opportunity to share this data consistently with how we report to the federal government, which will also, I think, be a more accurate description of our demographic composition. Since this report will be based on slightly different numbers, I'll not be giving comparison data with the previous reports I've given you, but rather with our previous EEO 5 filings since 2014, which marks the state of the demographics upon the beginning of the current administration. For the following three slides, you can also refer to the raw data shared in board docs for the 2014, 2016, and 2018 EEO 5 filings. I'll start with the new hires, which are listed in lines 23 through 28 of the EEO 5 report. This part of the report really only has utility for our use with classroom teachers, as this is the typical hiring period from July 1st to September 30th. There's a place in the report for administrators and others, but this isn't where they're necessarily selected, and so it gives a skewed picture of that reality. And I'm going to cover that in a couple of slides. Also note behind the job classifications that denote the line on the actual report the numbers are found. Also of note on this slide is the updated student minority numbers. The total minority status has now reached 40% in York County schools, an increase of 7.5% over last year's number. However, the increase in black African-American student population has only grown 0.1% over the last year. While we do not see workforce numbers that come close to matching our student population, we do see a drastic rise in the 2018 totals of both the total minority teaching workforce, as well as the black African-American percentage. On top of our job fair participation, our efforts in this area to improve these numbers included sharing data with principals of their minority employee rates in relation to the division average, and personal conversations with each principal during the 2017 hiring season about making intentional efforts to protect against hiring bias. It is unclear if those efforts contributed to this increase, but those rates will be shared again this year in the spring as we move into the 2019 hiring season. We have a similar situation here with total classroom teacher status, in that we are very behind the curve of matching workforce to student minority status. However, we have made modest gains since 2014. The quandary here is the rate of minority student growth, especially during a time of national and state teacher shortage. The conclusion here is that clearly retention grows in importance, which is covered for all staff later in this presentation. Now to our administrators. Here, too, we continue to pull from the EEO 5 report. Here, we try to present a more accurate picture of our administrative status. A note here, I did not include a column for the difference since 2014, because there was some significant flux in who we were counting where on the EEO 5. We now have a picture that truly reflects those that fulfill an administrative function, so I put the 2014 and 2016 numbers that were reported to the federal government, but are not exactly in apples-to-apples comparison in gray. As you can see, the principals and assistant principals, there's no change there. The numbers in green indicate our current status where our workforce percentages exceed their corresponding student population. Administratively, we do compare well in a number of areas with our student percentages, but work still remains with principals and school board office leadership. These numbers will not change drastically overnight due to the low number of positions that turn over. But Dr. Shandor is aware of the status and will factor into how we develop leadership from our healthy pipeline of instructional coordinators, assistant principals, and teacher Next in the report is nonlicensed staff compensation. Two points to remember here. We continue with our quadrennial compensation review of nonlicensed employee groups. This year is the last in that four-year cycle, so Group 4 is currently under review and will be completed for inclusion in the FY '20 budgeting cycle. The current group under review for that cycle are the chief officers in grades 28 through And, a study group has been convened to evaluate the current nonlicensed pay scales due to growing employee dissatisfaction with the structure of the compensation on those scales. And you'll remember, we had a discussion about that a few work sessions ago. The group is deep into that work now, and we've identified five parameters as goals for any recommendation that may come to you later, but we felt it important to share with you now. And those parameters are in list of importance. Number one, to reach equity with regional comparators in regard to starting and ending pay. Right now, we do match up well on the salary midpoints, and that's what we're measuring when we're doing quadrennial review. But we are finding that our starting and ending pays are not comparing well with the region. Second, ensure that all employees receive some additional compensation each year. You know, a lot of our employees after Step 11 will hit three-to-four-year plateaus in the pay scale. So years when we are even restoring Steps, there are employees that are not getting a raise during those years. Number three, which is actually two, simplify the pay grades and eliminate exceptions as much as possible. We now currently have nine pay scales that are exceptions to the pay grade, so we'd like to simplify all that and remove those. Four, raise the cap on the Step system to allow for Steps above 22. It's very common in our industry to see Steps to 25 or 30, and the teachers enjoy that, and this is something that is a sore spot with some of our nonlicensed employees. And then fifth, institute a regular job description revision process. This would help when we do the quadrennial review, because we're making sure that we're comparing our employees to the people that we're comparing to, apples-to-apples. Finally, in regards to employee retention. With the switch from collecting retention data from a more reliable source than exit surveys, you remember in the previous strategic plan, we used exit surveys. We created a required resignation form that allows us to now track actual retention data. Retention is an important HR metric that should be collected and monitored, as employee turnover can be very costly for the division. Not to mention the cultural cost if the employee is a high performer. We are presenting four different indices to allow for a more accurate picture of our retention condition. We will refer to these as R1, R2, R3, and DCT. R1 refers to our actual bottom-line turnover rate. What percentage did not leave their job during a single year? R2 discounts the employee decision to retire at the end of their careers and adds that percentage to the R1 number. R3 discounts for reasons beyond division control, including reclassifications within the division, promotions within the division, promotions outside of the division, employees deciding to go back to school, family relocations and spousal transfers, medical reasons, and family obligation. And then the resulting gap are what we call division-controlled turnover, which includes reasons such as, sometimes employees don't give us a reason why they left, that they accepted a similar position elsewhere, dissatisfaction with the salary and benefits, or dissatisfaction with a supervisor, or that their contract was renewed, or the infamous "other" category, which we do have a few of. So in clearer terms, R1 is who's returning. R2 is those who are returning plus retirement, and R3 is all of the above plus those with good reasons to leave, revealing a DCT, and that's where the work lies. So here are the new retention metrics. You'll find the raw number of employees lost and the percentage of the remaining positions divided by the number of FTE allocations. This draws a different picture than we were getting with exit survey data in the previous five years. And here, we see a fairly common retention rate between our licensed and nonlicensed. That leaves us with a DCT of around 5% in both employee classes, where of course, we can improve, which leads us to the next reason we have left exit surveys as a measurement. They measure dissatisfaction as the employees leaving the division. And one more thing before we get to that. With the new resignation form, we are also able to have a more accurate picture of the specific reasons for people leaving. Here, you see the percentages derived from the total number leaving. Retirement remains our number-one reason for leaving for about a third of our licensed staff and about a quarter of our nonlicensed. We do have one R3 contributor in each of the job classes, which brings us again to job satisfaction and how we can improve it. So with this new strategic plan, we are shifting away from the importance of exit surveys and emphasis on working condition surveys, administered to high percentages of each employee group before an employee has decided to leave the division. We gave the first iteration of the Licensed Working Condition Survey in 2017. This survey was designed by the New Teachers Center in Santa Cruz. It's been found to be valid and reliable, and it's used by many states and school divisions. We administered the TEL in 2017, and principals and departments have put into place plans to improve in areas of weakness. We had planned to administer it again this spring, but the VDOE commissioned a similar survey from UVA, and they've put that out there. So we did an evaluation, revealed that the new survey actually was more streamlined than the TEL, and it had a lot of redundancy. So we're going to, well, we don't have a choice. We have to give it. But we're not going to give the TEL separately in addition. So we'll be administering that new survey in February and reporting out results to you next fall. Also in the spring, we'll be administering a new survey for all those not taking the VDOE, so those will be a lot of the nonlicensed people. This survey was built in-house on the skeleton of the TEL survey with representatives from 10 York County School Division employee work groups, reconstructing the survey to answer questions germane to their work group. This will be the first comprehensive working condition survey of our nonlicensed employees, and we will also share those results with you in the fall. And plans will be assigned for improving where there needs to be improvement, so that we can combat that DCT. So all in all, you can see how these items are interrelated. As we make more effort monitoring and addressing working conditions, along with competitive salaries and benefits, we can positively affect our retention rates, which in turn places less pressure on the need to recruit, leaving the issue of intentionality on building diversity, as we all believe that a diverse workplace is a stronger one. Thank you for the opportunity. This concludes my report, and I welcome any questions you have at this time.
I have just a couple of quick ones. First of all, referencing the diversity piece. I mean, it's something we can be very proud of there. I mean, there's a lot of work that's been done there. To see the numbers that you just, the data you just provided to us, that's good. I mean, that's something that we can talk about and into whatever the magic you all are doing in recruiting and looking for teachers. Our question, though, is that you mentioned that we are a division that experienced teachers want to come to. Is there a balance between bringing in experienced teachers and then graduates that want to come work in York County, but there's not as many slots possibly because the experienced teachers are getting them? How's that balance? What do we look for as a division?
Well, we don't have a target number, because we allow the principals to do their own hiring. There's obviously, you know, trade-offs there. Research will tell you that teachers really start to hit their stride at eight years into the, or that that learning curve tends to flatten out after eight years, so there's an advantage to hiring those people. But then again, there's also advantages to hiring kids straight out of school. You get to shape them, you know, they're more open to learning from you, and there's an enthusiasm and energy that, quite frankly, comes with, you know, youth.
All right, and then jumping over to position reviews. Refresh my memory, are directors and principals, assistant principals, assistant, associate directors, are they nonlicensed?
Right, so they're up for, they're in Group 4.
So that will, so even though it says chief officers, that whole, our management-level folks in Group 4, which is...
28 through 35 is where those positions fall, what you just mentioned.
Okay, so those positions, well, just wanted to make sure that was happening, and that was all I had thinking.
Just real quickly, so you mentioned earlier there's been a little bit of a struggle in hiring minority teachers. What do you think you attribute that to?
There's a lot of things. If you look at the, if you look at the research on teacher recruiting, now that is usually always done with people right out of college. But a number of things. People coming straight out of college, they will be looking, 75% of them get jobs within 40 miles of either their undergraduate college program or 40 miles from their hometown. So for the most part, you need to fall in one of those. Secondly, when you're talking about teachers of color, and we've been focusing on historically black colleges, they're smaller institutions, and they just don't put out the numbers to spread them out. It gets diluted pretty quickly into whatever school system they select. Also, they tend to be near urban centers, and research also shows that those graduates are looking for what they call a similar urbanicity, a similar experience. So there are not a lot of HBCUs sitting in counties like York County and within 40 miles. So it's very hard to attract those types of candidates here.
So I had a very interesting and long conversation with Scott Meadows this morning. I was up at Queens Lake. Phenomenal principal, by the way. And we were talking about potential reasons for the teacher shortages. So, and anybody can answer this, I'm asking it to the room. So, and anybody can answer this, I'm asking it to the room. Based on your experience, what do you, what do you attribute the shortage to? I mean, I have a theory, but I'd like to hear.
What's your theory?
My theory is not just pay-centric. I think over time, teachers realize because of the standardized curriculum and learning and tests, they lose some of their academic freedom that they may have developed during their school years. And so they don't have the freedom to teach how they want to teach, not necessarily what they want, they know what they want to teach. So I think it has more to do with not just pay, but losing a little bit of the ability to be free in the classroom to teach how they want to teach. Because we all know that because of the standards, oftentimes our teachers, and we're not immune to this, all school districts are, experience this, our teachers have to move on for the sake of moving on, or otherwise they're not going to meet what there's, you know, the milestones. So that's what I think it is. A lot of people want to say it's pay. I don't think it's pay because the teachers that I've met since I've been on the school board, they want to teach, they're very passionate about teaching. And when you're that passionate about something, the money just, it matters, but it's not that much of a contributing factor. So that's why I would like, I would be interested, based on, I mean, you've done a lot of recruiting. Based on your experience and what you're seeing, what's your theory?
Well, I think that what you're speaking to might affect those beginning teachers that are in their first five years of teaching. They thought it was something, they got into it and realized there was accountability, and maybe that might convince some people to leave the industry. But when we're talking about a shortage, it's at the, it's at the source, it's at supply. So people aren't entering it as a career in college, they're not making it a choice there. And I think the historical low pay is certainly something that's out there all the time. I also think that when you look at the politics of the last 20 years, public education gets a bad rap all the time, and they hear that. And then you look at what might be happening in your family. Sometimes entering the teaching field is looked down upon as not making what they thought your parents would want you to make. So in comparison to other professions, it's not looked upon sometimes as the best investment for your education dollar. So I think all of those things and other things play into that decision to try something else.
The other thing is, it's a really hard job. I mean, being a teacher is a hard job. It's not just, you know, show up, walk in your room, hang with the kids all day, go home. I mean, there's a lot of detail and assessment and relationship building with kids and parents and peers, and it's a hard job. This isn't, you know...
Right, but I don't know if that's what discourages people from going into the field. But to make the point, that's why we're talking about working conditions, because one of those questions in the surveys are, are you able to, are you recognized as an educational professional, as an expert in the classroom? Are you able to make choices that give you some freedom? And there's a, there's a balance there to be struck between the accountability of you moving your students forward and being accountable to the system as a whole, and making sure the students are being taught what they're supposed to be taught.
Let's park there for just a second, if you guys don't mind, because you're asking a question I think is unfair. Anybody, I think most people would agree that yes, they are able to make decisions. But do they feel empowered to make those decisions? Or have they been given that leeway by their administrators or their department chair, whomever, to make those decisions? Do they feel comfortable in that environment, making those decisions?
I think that was part of the TEL survey there.
Right, that's one of the questions we're asking, because if we saw low results in that area, that's something we didn't look at.
We go back to Slide 6 real quick, just for a second. I wasn't going to ask any questions, but you guys sort of got me off on this tangent here. I'm sorry, not, it wasn't that, I think it might have been Slide that had the bullet points, the five bullet points.
Okay, yeah, those were, this is non-licensed compensation.
Yeah, so let's talk about number one real quick. Reach equity with regional competitors, comparators in regards to starting and ending salary. How good of a job do we do in educating our employees that when it comes to pay and compensation, regional comparators may not really be fair because of the different ways that the different school divisions are funded, you know, because of different dynamics?
I would say very little. Probably here in these meetings, we talk about it, teacher council, we talk about it. You have a couple of advisory groups where it's discussed, but we're not in a division-wide discussion about, you know, the structure of our compensation.
Did you understand my question?
Well, I thought the question was, how much are we doing to communicate then?
And educating them, that compare, these comparisons may not be totally applicable or fair because of the way the varying school districts are funded.
Oh, okay. No, because we're not even having that conversation at all, was my point. So we're not even getting to what you're stating as the individual local division's ability to structure, to pay their people certain ways and the way they make individual choices on how they structure it.
Are you talking about the employee themselves, educating the employee, or?
Yeah, because he mentioned early on that there was continued dissatisfaction from employees about starting and ending pay. I can't remember exactly how you put it.
The starting pay is actually more of a division concern because it puts us in a bad position for recruiting people to come start with us because we'll offer a job, but they can get something else closer by at a higher rate. The midpoint, as I said, is good, and we compare it on a quadrennial basis, so we keep up with that. The ending pay is more of an employee concern because they're hitting these midpoints. In Step 11, they're at about 92, 93%, I think, of their scale. So once they hit 11, those last 11 years, they do not add much to their, to their pay. So that's, that's something where, once they're with us, then they see that, you know, they see what the other divisions do, and they think, wow, maybe I could make more somewhere else.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Carroll, for that presentation and that update. Appreciate that. Our next presentation relates to proposed changes in the program of study. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Dr. Vladu, our Director of Secondary Instruction is now going to present information related to the program studies. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vladu.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight I provide you with an update on our 2019-2020 program of studies process, recommended new courses, revisions, and proposed deletions. Before I begin, I want to provide a little background for your view in public. The program of studies handbook is our middle and high school course information and registration guide. It is reviewed, revised, and published annually. Back in April, we solicited new course proposals and changes to existing courses from all secondary schools. Once recommendations were received, we convened a program of studies committee consisting of principals, counseling directors, instructional coordinators, IB and SOA program directors, and SBO staff. The committee met on October 5th and November 2nd to review all proposals and collectively decide which recommendations to move forward. Tonight I'll summarize the information provided to you in two documents that should be in your folder. Document 1 identifies the proposed changes, and document 2 identifies the proposed additions, costs, and rationale. As a reminder, the program of studies handbook will continue to be translated into four other languages. So before I list the proposed new courses, I want to share some information with you. Staffing at the secondary level is formula-based, and as such, there are no additional staffing requests. Unless otherwise noted in the budget impact column on the slide, existing budgets will support the cost of materials, curriculum writing, and training. Notice that in document 2, the cost of material and training varies. The cost of curriculum writing is a standard rate of $1,000 per course. So at this time, I want to draw your attention to document 1, page 1. There are five new YCSD courses being proposed this year. First, a career investigation course is proposed for students in grades 7 and 8. This course is required by the revised standards of accreditation and implements the strategic goal to provide career exploration at the middle school level. Second, we're also proposing the addition of computer science discoveries at the middle school level. This course will provide students with the opportunity to explore computer science fundamentals, coding, and robotics. We're also proposing the addition of a cybersecurity fundamentals course. This introductory course will investigate high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand career opportunities in the field of cybersecurity. This course will also expose students to emerging technologies, network threats, as well as protective measures. Also, as you may remember, two years ago, you approved the American Sign Language course. This year, we're proposing the addition of American Sign Language 2 to provide the students the opportunity to continue the studies or to meet the graduation requirement needed for the 2+2. In other words, you could earn two credits of any language to meet that requirement. Lastly, the proposed Credit for Work Experience course provides high school students who already have a job the opportunity to earn credit for demonstrating the workplace readiness skills in the real-world setting. Next, I want to draw your attention to the New Horizons Regional Education Center proposed course at the bottom of page 2. This year, New Horizons plans to offer a course in plumbing and pipe fitting to meet the high demand of these skill sets. This course will be offered at the Butler Farm campus. At this time, I would like to review the proposed revisions that begin at the top of page 3 in document 1. First, on this slide, the proposed addition of American Sign Language 2 requires American Sign Language to become American Sign Language 1. Second, currently, AP World History is a face-to-face class that is only available to students in the IB program. We're proposing to make this course available to students at all high schools. Based on discussions in the program of studies committee, as this is expected to be a popular course, please refer to document 2 for a more accurate projection cost for this proposal. Third, we'd also like to change the course Environmental Science to Ecology to align this course to VDOE nomenclature. Also, to more accurately reflect course content and to give students a better understanding of the course, Evolution of Cinema A&amp;B will change its name to Film Studies A&amp;B. Last, on this page, you may not be surprised, there's a lower focus or lower emphasis on print media in our society. As such, newspaper and mass media becomes digital journalism. Now, I would like to draw your attention to the information beginning on page 4 and ending at the bottom of page 5 in document 1. First, the Advanced Literary Arts Program for students in School of the Arts in grades 9 through 12 consists of two courses each year. We have revised the course description to reflect current practice. Second, beginning on page 6 and ending on page 7, you will see that School of the Arts students who are enrolled in Advanced Writer Workshop, Advanced Technical Theater Level 3 and Level 4, and Advanced Theater Arts Level 4 are required to complete an additional 140 practicum hours outside of the class. As such, we have updated the course description to reflect current practice. Now, I want to provide you with some program updates. The modified standard diploma is not an option for first-time ninth-grade students beginning with a 2013-2014 school year or later. As such, as we do not have any students under this diploma type, and all potential students have aged out, we have removed all references to this diploma type in the program of studies document. Last, on this slide, and as referenced at the bottom of page 7 of document 1, one of the criteria for students pursuing the honors program is to take a maximum of six AP courses across four different content areas. So we want to add the qualifying governor's school classes, which are listed on page 7, simply because these courses, the rigor has risen so much that they justify giving that credit to students. We also want to add students enrolled in Literary Arts 11 and Literary Arts 12, the option to use those courses to meet this requirement, as those students also take AP exam in those courses. Now, I would like to draw your attention to the information beginning on page 8 and ending at the bottom of page 10. As I've stated, middle school students are required to complete a career investigation course. In addition to the proposed career investigation course, on this slide, you have a list of grade 7 and grade 8 career and technical education courses and related courses. This spring, we are proposing to rewrite the curriculum of these courses to ensure that every student has the opportunity to complete a career assessment, learn about career pathways, and demonstrate age-appropriate workplace readiness skills. As such, we're proposing to update the description of these courses. Now, I'll provide you with an update to the New Horizons Regional Education Center course revisions found on page 10. First, Firefighter 1 and 2 changes to Firefighter. Also, the location of early childhood education changes from Butler Farms to Woodside Lane. This brings us to this evening's proposed deletions found on the bottom of page 10 and ending on page 11. As I stated earlier, we're proposing the addition of a career investigation course at the middle school level, and this course will replace the Career Discovery course, which we have taught for quite a while now. The last proposed item to delete tonight is the Trigonometry and Functions course. This year-long course duplicates the content delivered to our semester-long Algebra 3 and Trigonometry courses. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the work of the program of studies committee. At this time, I'm open for questions and comments.
Any questions?
Well, thank you, Dr. Vladu, for providing that update on the program of studies. Appreciate that. There's a lot of work y'all have done on that, so thank you. Our next topic of discussion is the school calendar. Dr. Shandor. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Thank you, Dr. Vladu, for that presentation and your work on that. All right, we're going to transition. I'm going to let Dr. Butler come up to the, to the table. So Dr. Butler, this evening, is going to share some information with the board related to the school calendar. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for this opportunity to present updates to the 2019-2020 draft calendar process. Per the Code of Virginia, every school division is required to draft calendars, which include 180 instructional days or 990 instructional hours per school year. In addition to that, at the middle school level, we're required for 560 instructional hours per year on the four core classes at the middle school level. What has been our practice in York County School Division is that a calendar committee convenes, and they're comprised of stakeholders, and so this year, we do have our calendar committee, which is composed of teachers, building administrators, school counselors, school board office staff, and parents. And they work together to develop a proposal for the annual calendar. Considerations and priorities for the 2019-2020 calendar includes the possibility of a two full weeks of winter break, also to look at the distribution of early release days in January and June, and the retention of the three-day Thanksgiving holiday break. There was a request that the committee made. One was the possibility of starting school before Labor Day during the last school year. The General Assembly was considering that, but that has since been rescinded, so that is no longer a possibility. One of the other things they did... One of the other things they did ask was, because staff, we surveyed to look at how we use our SAIPD days, our early release days, and also to gather some feedback concerning how Veterans Day is used in our division. As I shared, every year, the calendar committee reviews all these factors when they develop their calendar proposal. This year, the committee was facing some difficulties in reaching the 180 days required with all of the priorities that were built into the proposal. As you can see, using the current parameters, our current calendars look at 179 days, which is one day short of the 180-day requirement. And so, this evening, we're looking for some feedback on how to accomplish that goal. As you see before you, this is a comparison of all the days that we have provided for student holidays, also comparing it to the regional calendar committee's days. As you can see, with school starting on September the third, 2019, at the first day of school, the only days which are different between our calendar and proposals from the other schools in our region would be on Veterans Day, which is a student holiday, a staff work day, which is York County School Division only, and then on our last day of school, we end school on June the eleventh. We have Newport News probably schools ending on June the fifteenth, and the other school divisions ending on June the twelfth. And so, this is the progress that we were making with the calendar committee, and as I said, we were open for feedback from the school board this time.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I'd just like to point out one thing. I know a couple of years ago, we tried to, the whole point of the calendar was to get us in line with everybody else, with all the other divisions, and I think you've done a real good job of that, other than this year, at least we have a little issue with what we're going to pick. And look in those days, I'll just throw this out there, all the other school divisions are, the students are going on Veterans Day, our teachers are already there, and we use that as a makeup day this past year. I know we live in an area with a lot of veterans, a lot of military, but the other school divisions are doing it. I think the parents are still off, if they have that day off, depending on who they work for, so I'm sure they would enjoy a day maybe without their children there. They can get some stuff done, too, so I don't know. But anyway, I'm just throwing it out there that I'm good with the Veterans Day on my side, but thank you for doing that, and I'll let the other board members talk.
The only question I had, I know Veterans Day, do the teachers still use that, especially the elementary, to meet with parents? Is that still a parent-teacher?
We have two days in November, and typically, yes, Veterans Day is the parent-teacher conference day for elementary.
So I guess where would that be captured?
We have to address, we have to look at that.
Right, but it could be done, though.
We had to address it this year. I mean, we went to school that day, so we had to provide some extra support to the schools for substitutes, and quite frankly, our teachers stayed after and met with as many parents as they could, so we managed to work through that.
So, if Newport News is, apologies, Mark, were you?
No, I was just, I mean, you struggle with the calendar every year with different things. There's always something different. If it's something that has to be done, we have to do it. But my last thing was, is this going to give us any buffer for weather days? Are we going to be like?
We'll still have bank time, we'll have hours banked and banked timed, as far as days, no. It won't help us at all. I mean, the challenge is, you know, a few years ago, the board was very supportive on adding that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I can tell you, people in the room, I'm sure, would agree that's a big day in our school division, having that day off. And, you know, if you're traveling, you can make all those arrangements, so that one's it.
But I think early on, I know we've done this before in the past, where we identify certain days, I think we still do, that these will become regular student days if there's a weather.
Correct.
Situation, so, and we would identify those days ahead of time.
Right. Okay. So I read this interesting blog the other day. It's called "The Fine Art of Stating the Obvious." So I'm going to state the obvious, okay? If we've got school divisions that are letting school out on June the twelfth, and we're struggling because we're a day short, why don't we extend it a day? How difficult, what's the difficulty in that?
Our difficulty, so for our school division, our graduation commencement services is on that Friday, and so, because we use William and Mary Hall, that's difficult because Williamsburg Jameson County uses it on that Saturday, so that Friday is a regular day. And then Newport News, their seniors graduate earlier, and so that their students continue in school after their seniors have already graduated, and they don't come back in the building after graduation, which is earlier than their last day of school.
So do these 179 include the half-days? Are half-days counted as a full instructional day in regards to the calendar?
Yes, it does count as instructional days.
So taking away a half a day and making that a full day is not going to affect the calendar at all, then?
No, it affects the bank hours we use in case we did have inclement weather, but it doesn't meet the 180. It doesn't help or hurt the 180-day required.
Yeah, and that suggestion is a good one. We could certainly explore that for next year's calendar. I'm not sure of the availability of William and Mary Hall a week earlier. That's certainly something that we could explore. Other divisions have done that for a number of years. That's certainly something that we could review.
Well, for the seniors, well, never mind. That, what I was going to say didn't make any sense, and if it doesn't make sense to me, it's sure not going to make any sense to you.
And I've thought about the last day of school also, but I do know that, you know, my kid's graduating on Friday, you have lots of families that, they're not going to be there anyway. You're not going to have a, I don't know, you don't have to have a quorum, I guess, for school, but for one of our meetings, we do, but you're just not going to have the people there, and they're going to wrestle with, well, we have school that day, but I have graduation. Then you have the teachers on top of that that are there for all the graduations.
Yeah, next, as Zach and I was asking about the half-days, because, you know, the last couple of weeks typically are, it's just littered with half-days here and there, so there's a way to manipulate that, but if they're counted as full instructional days already, then it doesn't make any difference.
I mean, what I'm hearing is there's two things to explore. One is consider Veterans Day, and two is if there's an opportunity to maybe consider moving graduation up, and you can capture that day. Is that right, or no?
That's correct.
Is our regional programs, like New Horizons, Governor's Schools, are they closed that day, Veterans Day, or are they open?
They're open because their schedule falls.
They fall according to orders. So are students that are in those programs, do they go that day?
They traditionally have not, unless they're, no, they do not.
I would be okay with Veterans Day.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Butler, for that, providing us that update on the calendar.
And let me ask this, Dr. Butler, when will this come back to the board?
We, what's been our practice is that for the March, we typically, we bring this back to our committee. Our calendar committee has another meeting in January, and sometimes we'll go into February, but considering the process at the current time, we should have concluded everything by January, early February, so we can present back to the board the proposal.
Their recognition.
Yeah, their recognition.
The General Assembly meet this year in spring?
Yeah.
You know, the whole Labor Day thing was, it was shot down by a very, very narrow margin, so don't be surprised if that's reintroduced. So are we prepared? Are we prepared for that?
Well, I'll go now, completely, 100% for a pre-Labor Day. I mean, I think the kids should go to school, and then, when they go away for that two-week break, they should be done. You know, we, Dr. Guy actually sent a message to principals today about, you know, letting folks, letting kids enjoy their families and not, you know, putting a lot of demands on them over those holidays, so that they can be kids and enjoy their families. If the semester's over, if you start a little bit earlier, you could finish before the holiday break. That's a wonderful schedule. I was in Georgia for a number of years, and that was, that's the way the schedule was there. There's a lot of advantages also when you think about, you just heard Dr. Ledoux, wherever he went to, talk about AP exams. AP exams, again, our kids are behind because they're starting, you know, just thinking in the western part of the state, they're starting three or four weeks ahead of us. So by the time AP exams start, our kids are, you know, I know, we do a lot of work in the summer, and we do a lot of work to prepare them, but when I got here four years ago, Mr. Medford, and I'm thinking, Ms. Kirsty and Ms. Haywood, we all went up to Richmond, and we lobbied and had a lot of discussions with folks who make those decisions, and they weren't as receptive three years ago, but I think, again, 84 school divisions start before Labor Day out of 132. So if you pull that map up on the VDOE website, it's pretty noticeable about who's not getting to do that, but I'm all for advocating for that.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Butler and Dr. Shandor. I'll let you share more about the next agenda item that's relating to our budget.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Butler. Now, we're going to move to the Bill Bowen part of our evening. He has the next two presentations. So the first one is on the FY 2020 budget outlook. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, I have several items to share with you about the budget. I'll begin with providing you an update on how the school division ended FY 2018, and then provide an outlook of the FY 20 budget, and then conclude with a proposed change to the FY 19 budget. So for 2018, school division ended on a strong note with a balance of more than $618,000 in operating funds. And as most of us know, any balances that remain in our operating fund do not rest with the, with school division, they revert back to the county. So however, the county has historically re-appropriated those funds back to the school division for specific projects. So now that our audit is complete, we'll be asking the school board later this month to request the board supervisors to reappropriate that $618,000 for various capital projects, technology, and textbooks. In addition, for the Revenue Stabilization Fund, we had a balance at the end of June for $9.4 million. And as a reminder, the Revenue Stabilization Funds are derived from federal impact aid revenue. In our budget, we have a baseline of eight and a half million for impact aid revenue. Any funds that we receive above that eight and a half million reverts to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. This, 2018 was the first year in three years that we didn't meet that target. We were about $200,000 short of the eight and a half million, so we did contribute to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, and I'll talk a little bit about, a little bit more about that in the presentation. So for the school division, we have three sources of revenue. State revenue represents about 50% of our budget, local revenue represents about 40%, and 10% is that federal revenue. For the state revenue, there's not a lot that we know at this point. The governor has yet to release his budget. What we have here is the latest press release from the governor, gives us some insight on the state of the economy. So through October 2018, or actually, for the month of October, revenue collections were up over 10% from the previous fiscal year, and year-to-date, collections are up 4.5%, which is 3% ahead of the annual forecast. So, the House Appropriations Committee met in November, they've updated the revenue forecast for the current biennium, which is FY 19 and FY 20. They've increased the revenue collection, or revenue forecast by $600 million. However, what we understand is that about $500 million of those dollars are committed to Medicaid. There was a, apparently, there was an error in the forecast for Medicaid spending, and they were off about half a billion, excuse me, half a billion dollars, so they have to make up that shortfall. But it does mean that there is some funding that's available. It just depends on, you know, the priorities of the General Assembly, how much of that falls to K-12 education. As most of you know, each locality is assigned an index. This is the Local Composite Index, and it's used to determine a locality's ability to pay for K-12 education. This is updated every two years, and at the last update, the index for York County decreased by .83 percentage points. And historically, what this means is, as the rate increases, the locality pays more for the cost of education, and the state gives school divisions less money. On the flip side, as that rate decreases, the state pays more for the cost of education. And theoretically, the county wouldn't have to pay as much for education, but what they've done historically is they've kept our funding either level-funded, or they've actually given us an increase based on demand for services. 60% of those localities listed here experienced decreases in the index. So while the LCI won't be updated for the next year, as we head into the budget process, it helps to know where we stand as a community. So as we hit, as we look to FY 20, there's several fiscal challenges that we face. Continued lack of state funding, which puts increasing pressure on the local government. I will add that this is, this continues to be a legislative priority for both the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the school board officials, and also the county. Also pressures to maintain competitive salaries for staff, address increasing enrollment, and also address capacity concerns at the elementary level. This next slide is a snapshot of our average daily membership. So since the year 2000, 2006 represents our highest record of average daily membership at 12,797. 2013, it was 12,000, hit a low of 12,226. And for FY 19, you can see, we had an initial projection of 12,730. Through October, we currently stand at 12,785. So, looking at the numbers, I would not be surprised if in 2019, we surpassed that 2006 number. We've met with the county planning director, planning department, Tim Cross. Dr. James and I met with him, and based on his numbers, he's projecting another 200 students off the FY 19 projection. So, for budgeting purposes for FY 20, we'll be basing that on an additional 200 students. And just the budgetary impact on those numbers alone means that we'll have to add at least eight additional teachers.
So is that based on projected development, or is that based on absorbing families from the varying locations that had natural disasters like Panama City and Tindall, places like that?
So there's a formula that he has, that he looks at, you know, developing communities, which properties are, have been built and are ready to be occupied, be sold. We look, and he has a ratio that he applies for each type of housing. So if it's single-family, it's, you know, one factor of students. If it's apartments, it's another factor. If it's townhomes, it's another factor. So, he has a, he's been doing this for a number of years, and I want to say, for the past three years, he's been very, very accurate, so, and they are the primary source of providing that number to us.
Though he hasn't added in Tindall, the Tindall Air Force Base, namely, is moving here.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
So, it could be that if Tindall hasn't recovered, that we could see those numbers increase, the projected number of 12,000.
It's going to be a long time before they recover. They were decimated, so.
So, not only are we dealing with the increase in enrollment, we're also dealing with increases with students with disabilities. And while these numbers represent individual students, and that's a concern for us, it's really the students that come to us with multiple disabilities. We're seeing more severe disabilities, and with those disabilities requires additional services, requires additional specialized equipment, and in some cases, may even require a one-on-one para. So I talked a minute ago about capacity issues at the elementary level. As you can see on this slide, there are four elementary schools where enrollment currently exceeds the instructional capacity, as indicated by the shaded cells. Those schools, Bethel Manor, Coventry, Crafton-Bethel, and McGruder. In school division, the school admin and the CIP committee will continue to monitor this issue as we move forward. There are strategies in place to address the increase enrollment, and those include temporary classrooms, adjustments to attendance zones, adding additional classrooms, or building a new school. So back to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. I mentioned that there were no contributions in 2018. There is a very healthy balance of $9.4 million, but of that balance, we have current commitments, and these commitments come as a result of previous work between the school board and the board of supervisors. We have $300,000 that is committed to our FY 19 budget. That $300,000 goes away after this year, so just one point to mention here, as we build our 2020 budget, we have a shortfall that we have to fill, $300,000. We have capital projects for this year. We're using Revenue Stabilization Funds of $1 million to support the capital projects, and this is intended to ease the debt load on the county. And then, for our new elementary school at the Marquee, we have $1.8 million set aside for A&E work. So after the commitments, we have an estimated available balance at $6.6 million.
Doesn't lower us, we ever had that.
No, it's hovered around $5 million to $5.5 million. We've had some discussions about what is an appropriate number, and I'll tell you, I don't know what the magic number is, but I would feel comfortable if we left that number, if we had that floor as $5 million. There's, there has been some talk about a recession down the road, so when a recession hits, it usually hits for two years, so we just need to be prepared. So when a recession hits, it usually hits for two years, so we just need to be prepared that we have sufficient funds available in case we get that. Because as I mentioned, as the economy goes, so does school funding. So we feel reductions from the state, but we also feel pressures from our, from our local government, and those two being our primary sources of our funding.
If we look back on the worst-case scenario that happened way back when Impact Aid, I mean, had the disaster, worst-case scenario, factoring in inflation now, wondering what that number should be. You'd have to go back and research to find out what the void was. We literally, I went around to that one, but I remember.
It was initiated when those payments were frozen, and so we lost all that revenue.
And it was a total loss, I think. So it lasted for what?
I don't.
I just don't remember. I just remember it. So.
It's the early 90s.
But maybe look at that and factor inflation and then see what a comfortable total should be if that worst-case scenario happened to get it next one frozen for years.
So some good news is this is information on our federally connected students. These numbers come from those students who complete the Impact Aid survey cards. So since 2016, we've seen, we've seen an increase of, let me see. I think it was 150, 155, 155 students. So that number continues to increase. So we expect that number to increase moving forward. The survey cards were due in November, so we haven't finished the counting for this fiscal year. So we should have that done by January. So as a result of that, of that news, we don't expect any significant changes to FY 20. Staff has reached out to the Impact Aid office, and right now, the estimates for FY 20 are not available. So this is our budget calendar moving forward. December 18th, the governor is expected to release his budget. On January 14th, I will provide a budget update at the school board work session. On the 28th, we have a public forum on the budget. And on February 4th, the superintendent presents his proposed FY 20 budget. We'll have a public hearing on the 25th, and then on March 25th, the school board is expected to approve the FY 20 budget. And then the final item this evening is a proposed change to the FY 19 budget. So this information came to us meeting with the, with the county. The county has taken some of its positions, and they've moved those positions for people that work directly with the workers' comp or work with the health insurance. They've moved them into, they've moved those positions and funding to the workers' compensation fund or to the health insurance fund. Our two funds do have a healthy fund balance. And so what I would be proposing would be to move at least one position from our operating budget to the workers' compensation fund and two positions to the health insurance fund. And together with those three positions frees up about half of the $300,000 that we're expected to lose from the revenue stabilization funds. So by just making those changes, which makes sense because those positions work directly with workers' comp and health insurance, that would save us $150,000. And I'll be bringing that request at the December meeting.
Those are reoccurring dollars?
Those are reoccurring dollars. Correct. And that concludes my budget outlook for this evening.
So has there been discussion about researching alternative forms of energy such as solar to reduce the power? Because I look at the claim certified for payment every month. Our, the amount of money that we pay for electricity is crazy. Has there been thoughts or conversations regarding maybe, maybe looking at solar to help reduce that?
Doug, would you know if there's been some discussions or Mark, or Greg, you're the only, Dr. James not here. I could, I have to defer to one of you guys.
We've looked at it in years past, and there's a sizable investment to get started with putting in solar cells. And we'd have to look at it and see what it would really, you know, net save us in the end. I just don't have that information off the top of my head.
And we've done some other energy efficiency updates. Right, we're, in 1997, we went through the building, and we replaced all of our lighting, put in new lighting, went to more energy-efficient lighting. Now we're moving to LED now, and we also do some more, some controls, building automation controls to make the building operate efficiently. So we've done those steps. We looked at the solar, like Doug said, we looked at the solar. At that point in time, we were looking at solar, trying to get a bond or get a loan to do solar panels. By the time the solar panels would wear out, we'd have to get a new loan to replace them again. So it didn't look practical at that point in time, but that was a few years ago.
Yeah, I think it's worth re-looking at because everything that I've been seeing in regards to solar, particularly for commercial entities such as the school district or a commercial building, the real initial investment is just paid for the life of the panels. So I think it would be worth looking at, especially if you need to make up shortfalls.
Right.
I think we're already doing some energy savings. Our heating and air conditioning, and then they do the ground.
Geothermal.
Geothermal. So if it wasn't for that, it'd be even more, I know, for that. But they did a lot of the schools with geothermal. Any additional questions for Mr. Bowen on the budget?
Over to you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bowen, for providing that budget update. So Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share more about the last agenda item relating to the proposed capital improvement program.
Yes, Mr. Bowen thinks he's funny. I'm going to embarrass him. I'm going to put you on, so they.
Oh, it's a nice, nice picture.
See how much fun they had with you with the Dallas Collar hat on your head? Thanks, Mr. Bowen. It is a different, it is a different cover. Thanks, Mr. Bowen. So now he is going to cover the capital improvements program. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, I'm presenting the superintendent's proposed capital improvements program for fiscal years 2020 through 2025, and a copy of the CIP has been provided to you. The basis of the CIP is the six-year facilities master plan that was presented in detail by Mr. Sheerhart and Dr. James at the November 5th work session. I won't review all the individual projects again. Instead, I want to walk you through the changes that have been made since the last work session, present a format change and additions to the CIP document, and conclude with our next steps. So since our November work session, three changes have been made to the projects. First, the York High School project, Phase 1 roof, it's coat the low-slope roof. This was a two-year project that was initially set to begin in the summer of 2019. The second phase of the project was not planned to be completed until 2021, which was two years later. There was some concern about warranty issues and delaying that project. So staff had an A&E firm perform an assessment of the roof and identified some, and that identified some rather minor issues. And based on that information, and after talking with the principal, staff felt comfortable moving Phase 1 of that project from 2019 to 2020. And doing so, this work will now be done in back-to-back years. So by moving that Phase 1 of the York High roof out one year, staff recommends moving forward the roof project at Dare Elementary and the breezeway enclosure and security vestibule at Mount Vernon Elementary. The results of these changes mean we spend less, about $100,000 less in FY 19. Also, as a result of these changes, there's no, there's no additional cost in dollars. There was one format change to the CIP this year. Mrs. Golf and her staff prepared a new cover for the, new professionally designed cover for our document. Couple of other things that we added. Each project now has its own worksheet that details, provides more detailed information about the individual projects. You'll note at the top of the page, and I know this is difficult to see, but at the top of the page includes the project name and the amount of the project, the year the project funding will be available. In the next section of schedule of activities, you can see that the costs are further broken down by A&E, construction, and are set aside for contingencies. And that last section includes the means of financing. And as you can see here, the parking lot expansion at Dare Elementary will be financed by debt service. Let me add that the detailed project information mirrors the county CIP, and it's important to provide this for accountability and transparency of the CIP program. I would like to thank Dr., Dr., Mr. Sheerhart and Mr. Yurby for their contributions in preparing these worksheets. This took a lot of time. They spent numerous weekends putting this information, information together. But we really felt it was necessary information because it just provides more information to the casual reader and to the citizens of York County. Here's just another example of a project, expanding bus loop and parking lot at Queens Lake Middle School.
Can you talk about Queens Lake for just a second? So I was facing the road, and I noticed students were riding their bikes from the left. And that, that grassy area between the entrance and the exit of the school, they had to ride their bikes on the main road to get to the side of the school where the bike racks were. And it was, at that time of the morning, this was around at 8 o'clock. So at that time of the morning, it was very heavily trafficked. So just something to think about, maybe putting bike racks on both sides of the building so they wouldn't have to ride on the main road, or in the future, looking at putting at least a bike path along that strip of land so that if they do have to ride in that area, they don't have to go on the main road. They would have their own path to ride on. Do you think that would be possible or?
We'd take a certain, take a look at it. And Mr. Goleck knows that school and the area there pretty well. So we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it was sort of scary, actually, watching the middle schoolers ride their bikes on that road. Buses were coming, and traffic's coming, and it was just, you know. Or locate bike racks on the other side of the building, so.
So for our next steps, December 17th, we'll have a public hearing on the CIP. We'll have a work session on the 14th. January 28th, the school board is expected to approve the CIP. And on the 29th, we'll forward the approved CIP accounting to be included in their budgetary process. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
If no questions, thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that presentation. I really do like that project detail. That's very user-friendly, and I think that's going to be very advantageous for the public when they look at the projects. And that's worth it. So I'd like to thank all those who presented topics this evening. Appreciate their diligence and keeping the board informed on the regular updates. That's going on. So our regular board meeting, our next board meeting will be Monday, December 17th, here at York Hall. But before that, we actually have a joint work session with the board of supervisors, the county board of supervisors, and that will be tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the TAB Public Library is where that's going to be at. And that's at 100 Long Green Boulevard. So that's where we'll be at tomorrow, meeting with the county. And staff will be there doing some presentations together jointly. So we're looking forward to that. So again, our regular meeting, our next regular meeting is Monday, December 17th at York Hall. No, after that. So if no one has any further questions or comments, word adjourned. Everybody have a great week.